Please turn your microphones on moving forward. I'd like to call the April 11th, 2020 meeting of the Town and District Unuplanning Board and Zoning Commission to order. So is Mr. Henry calling the role tonight?
Mr. Laflamme.
Here.
Mr. Scraby Tennis.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. McPartland.
Here.
Mr. Dorpino.
Here.
Ms. Shenfield.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Ms. Strang.
Here.
Chairman Walsh.
Here, thank you. Okay, first up is the approval of the minutes from the March 28th, 2022 meeting. Have a motion for approval of those minutes?
So move chairman?
Moved for approval by Mr. Laflamme. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Khan. And corrections, I only have one minor thing. I think we can make a friendly change and that's line 15 on page one, strike Elena Finnan and replace that with Mr. Hess at that meeting. I think we just do a friendly change on that because, you know, obviously. Anybody else have any other corrections or changes to the minutes? No?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of approval of the minutes from the March 28th meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing not opposed, the minutes from March 28th are approved. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move privilege of the floor. Do we have anybody online, Laura? We have nobody here in the public tonight.
I didn't receive any requests for online.
Anybody online wishing to speak regarding the privilege of the floor, we're planning in zoning matters? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, we'll close privilege of the floor. We have no unfinished business or new business tonight. So we're going to move right to our discussion items. Under discussion, the first item is 3713 State Street and that's the Goodyear Tire Site Plan Application for Keeping a 20-foot-long-by-8-foot-wide storage container in a parking lot. We have a representative tonight online with Goodyear?
There are two, Howard and Lucas.
Okay, is there a Tarbit?
Correct.
Yeah, and the other person is, I don't see a name up there. Oh, Mr. Bundy, okay.
Lucas Bundy, yeah.
Hey, Mr. Bundy, how you doing?
Good.
Hey, we all, you know, got the information in our packet. I don't know if you guys want to kick it off and talk about your submittal at all, brief the board, is that all right?
Sure, we're looking for approval to put a 20-foot storage container behind the building. It will be used to store commercial truck tires while we're testing the market. We have a need in the area for a couple of large customers of ours for commercial truck tires, which the retail center there does not carry and does not have the room to carry right now. Should the test go well, we would look at either adding on to that building or building a small addition to that building to store the tires. And we're looking for like 20 to 80 tires for the test.
Okay. And you say if this is a trial period in possibly future construction, what kind of time are you thinking that you need to come through a decision on that matter?
Realistically, one to three years, but it could go quicker. If it takes off, we could be coming back to you in six months and saying we need to look at adding on to the building.
I'm just actually just reading this now, I mean, I read it at home, but I didn't realize this says it's keeping a 20-foot, the Conax box is already there?
It is not there, no sir.
Okay, so it says for keeping, for installing one then. All right, and it's just as typical half, you know, ISO container, shipping container, right?
Correct, it's a half-size, it's 20-foot instead of a normal 40-foot.
Yep, and one thing is there, did you have a color in mind or appearance of this container? I know that usually become gray or like a navy blue.
It is a beige container, it's a one-trip container, so it's brand-new. We only came across the season once and then we purchased it.
Okay, all right. And I don't have, let's see, where you call from the agenda statement, Laura, you can straight me out, or Clark, is that it doesn't violate any setbacks with the location, you've got more than sufficient parking, so basically it's just a matter of, you know, putting this accessory structure there and that's the bottom line? Does that pretty much sum it up?
Yes, sir.
All right. And I think the only comment from the planning office was maybe the potential for any shielding, you know, shrubbery, or, you know, to shield it from the, potentially from the neighbors. I believe there's one neighbor behind you there, I'm sure that during the summer they probably get some growth there, maybe provide some shielding on its own, but I think that's pretty much it, it seems to be pretty straightforward. So I guess I could open it to the board, does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application?
I actually have a question. It says in some of the material that Laura sent out that the permit is granted for 30, well, for the first 30 days or three, but that they also, if it's going to extend beyond that, it seems like there's a maximum of three months that they can keep it. So the applicant just spoke about a six-month, would they approve an additional?
Yeah, that's for temporary storage, but if they're looking at an accessory structure, there is no timeframe unless we put a timeframe on it.
Okay.
All right, so accessory structure is different than a temporary storage structure.
I see, thank you.
And since it's greater than, was it 120 square feet, it classifies as an accessory structure?
Yeah, so without planning board, they have the benefit of that timeframe, but once they want to make it a semi-permanent or permanent addition to their property, then they have to go to planning board as an accessory structure.
I see, thank you.
Was there going to be any signage added to the outside of the container, Goodyear logos or anything like that?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, it seems to be pretty straightforward unless somebody's got some questions or comments. Do you have any concerns of planning office at all, or?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think it would be hard to shield with like vegetation because it's in a sea of asphalt, so I think that probably the question would be if they would put up some kind of like a, you know, a chain-link fence with slats or like something, so that we're not looking at the side of a beige, not sure.
Yeah, I mean-
Like how to make it look better.
Yeah, that could even be tough because if it's, was it eight-foot-high, was it eight-foot-high, right?
Correct.
Container, so if you're going to try to put a fence up, you'd have to put at least an eight-foot-high fence around it, and I don't know if that, that's why, you know, I've seen them where they were like a neutral gray or more of like a navy blue, I don't know what would be best over there. Maybe the beige might be bright, you know, a little bit brighter, you know? But without seeing it, you know, I'm just guessing, you know?
Yeah, so I guess that's the trade-off between viewing it as a fully accessory structure and as a temporary trial, like the applicant said they're trying to run. And so, you know, maybe if we came up with a timeline where they'd at least come back to us, I'd be okay with not doing a lot to the property by way of screening.
Yeah.
Until, right, especially if this may result in, you know, a new, a new building permit for extension or something else.
So that's, that's a good comment, so what we could do maybe is like condition a resolution that once the container gets delivered, installed, that we can take a look at to see if it's intrusive, you know, the color or whatever, and then maybe we could have a follow-on action if we need to look at some shielding or, you know, painting or something like that, you know, just because it may seem intrusive to the neighborhood. I think that-
I actually have it staged within Schenectady, so I can have it in place for you to view it within a week.
Over at the Goodyear store?
Correct.
State Street? Yeah, they might need to have the approval in order to place it there, Laura.
Yeah, you really shouldn't put-
Yeah, I'm talking after, assuming, I'm sorry, that we may get approval for, but I could have it in place relatively quick. You could go take a look and see if you needed the screening around it, or potentially if I need to paint it a different color, I can do that also. I've done that in a couple of other cities.
Okay. And that seems like a reasonable way to get, keep this moving, right? To call for a resolution for the next meeting, after it gets installed, we'll go over and view it and, you know, have a follow-on action if required. And the other thing we could also do is, you mentioned one to three years, is it something that we should have another condition that says, you know, we touch base again in a couple of years, Laura, or do we just approve it for an infinite period of time?
Well, I mean, the last time we saw this, well, we've seen this situation sort of particularly twice, like one was State Street, and that was temporary because we knew the addition was coming, so that one had pretty strict timelines for building permit. And then we had the one that we're actually still working on, Clericwitz is the name of that one, the Memory Care Place, Brookdale?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, those guys, we're having trouble getting them to come back to the planning board, so.
Yeah, right, do we need to have a time, you know, a time endpoint on this at all, or do we, is this just an accessory structure and treat it as an accessory structure and be done with it?
I mean, if it's going to be permanent, I think that you should work pretty hard on screening.
All right.
And I think that the applicant should come up with some ideas, because you can see, like, I mean, it's a pretty blank white wall, it's going to be obvious to have a container stuck to the back of that, so, and then maybe like contain the dumpsters too, so that everything is kind of tight and looks nice back there, because it's a residential neighbor that's directly across. But, you know, if you do want to put a timeline on it, then I think you could have that flexibility. But if you really want to treat it as an accessory structure in perpetuity, I think you would want to see more.
Yeah, that's the point I was making earlier. I, personally, I'd not want to see this as an accessory structure.
Forever.
And I'd want to put a timeline on it for when they come back. Something that's, you know, I'm thinking maybe by the end of the year, maybe nine months or a year.
Yeah, you know, we've, just for the applicant's information, we've run into this before where we've had, they're actually temporary storage areas versus accessory structures, but then they never followed up on the commitment to replace it or do anything with it, and I think there's like a code enforcement action on one applicant now as a result of that. So that's what, you know, that's why, you know, we like to make sure it looks halfway decent and it doesn't impact the neighbors, of course. So maybe we could, what we can do is, if it's okay with the board, we could have a resolution for approval, and then we have a viewing of it once it's in place with an opportunity for a follow-up for any shielding or repainting if it's required, and then we could set a time limit to come back to this board, you know, to touch base, either have an extension because you still need it, or you're going to have a new plan because you're going to build a, in addition to the structure. We could do that, but I think we should look at more than, you know, like a year and a half or two years, though. I think a lot of times we say, you know, nine months and that goes by so, goes by so quick.
That's fine, I think there needs to be a time limit on that.
Does that sound reasonable to the board? About to the applicant, does that sound reasonable to you guys?
Yes, sir, it sure does.
Okay.
I understand fully.
Okay, all right. Is that for the planning office and Clark and Laurie, is that, is that something we can handle with conditions?
Yeah, we can handle it, though my suggestion to the applicant would be to look at what would be doable for screening now, so that you have a sense of it, if you want that to be permanent, and maybe throw some things out there for the planning board meeting, just so we can prepare a resolution so that it can move forward. But to the extent that you can have stuff, ideas for what you can do to make it look better for the planning board at the next meeting, I think you should try to do that.
Okay.
All right, yeah, that sounds reasonable. Yeah, so think about it, we got a couple of weeks for our next meeting?
I think it's just two.
Two?
Yeah.
And we could have a tentative resolution, you know, again, based on where you stand, if you have an opportunity to think about it, you can call the planning office or submit your thoughts on screening if required, and what that would entail, whether it's a fence that's eight-foot or, you know, something else, all right? But, and again, we'll take a look at it and we can, you know, can either put that recommendation of screening into play or not, based on how it looks once it's set in place over there.
Okay.
All right. All right, any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I don't think-
You had to pull the microphone, please.
I don't think these containers are meant for the long-term. I don't think they really hold up for a permanent structure, so I'm very much in favor of a timeframe.
Yep.
And then make a decision and it's yea or nay and come in.
Yeah, we'll come up with a reasonable time. Like you said, we've always been, I think, kind of aggressive on time, and as we all know, time goes by pretty quick, and I don't know if you need time to evaluate, you know, in addition and all that, so, you know, I'm thinking, you know, at least 18 months or two years, it would be my-
I mean, it'd be cutting down the middle in his maximum time, right? So I think that's fine.
Okay, all right. All right, do you guys have any questions or concerns?
Yes, sir.
No, sir.
No, sir, okay, we'll have a tentative resolution with some conditions for the next meeting then.
Great, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and if somebody would like to be the point person on that one, please let us know, and I can touch base via email, all right? And, not you, Dave.
I got a bunch.
You got a bunch, but we could use some help on these, at least lead the discussion and you can take it, Mr. Laflamme? Okay, Mr. Laflamme will be the planning board point on that one, thank you. All right, next up is 2341 Knot Street, St. James Plaza, site plan application for placing a Chase Bank ATM in the Shoprite parking lot. And that's, let's see who we got there, Mr. Quinn tonight, or Mr. Miller, who we got?
Chris Quinn and Tom Riley. And Tom, Tom will do, will be doing the presentation, explanation.
Okay, Mr. Riley, you're up.
Okay, Tom Riley here, presenting on behalf of our clients, Chase Bank and the landlord here, for a development at the property at 2341 Knot Street in Schenectady, New York. Can you guys see my screen at this point?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you very much. So this is a planned development of an ATM site, it's a drive-up ATM, freestanding, not associated with a branch. It's going to be located in underutilized portion of the parking lot here at the development at 2341 Knot Street. So in the lower left-hand corner of the screen that I'm sharing, you'll see there's an area that's outlined in dashed red line, that's the area of the parking lot that we're talking about placing the improvement into. It would function as an ATM machine, it's an exterior version, so it's freestanding. As I drop down into sheet two, you'll see a little bit more of the plan view of this. So on the left-hand side of your screen, eight spaces would be consumed by the ATM site, that's our demo plan that's outlined in dashed black lines. There's an island that would house all the elements for this development, that's also outlined there as well. So entering in from the bottom of the screen to the top, we've got a vertical height detector that dissuades trucks and other vehicles that would be interference with the canopy that protects the ATM, so that doesn't allow that. And then we've got a light pole fixture there. We strive to maintain the specifications that Chase follows for security and lighting, so we provide a light pole so that we control the lighting within our entire site. Then there's an overhang that's a canopy that provides some protection for folks that are using the ATM machine, ATM machine surrounded by bollards for protection, it's got a security gate along the front end side, also to protect the machine. On the exit side, we've got a freestanding pedestal that houses a meter and a power panel that controls all the electric into the site, also provides a disconnect as well on the external portion. On the exit side, we use a stop bar and then do not enter lettering on the pavement, so we can control traffic that's entering back into the natural flow within the parking lot itself. And then we also have DOT signage, stop, do not enter. There's also a sign that's directing traffic to the right, so that it also exits to the right as opposed to crossing over traffic and causing any vehicular conflicts. Sheet A102 gives you a visual of what this site's going to look like, so it's designed for safety, so we're trying to keep an open environment, so that if there's any concerns to the clients that are using our machine, they've got free visibility from 360 around them. So we've got both the front elevation side and approach, or, excuse me, approach and depart, and then the rear is depicted in the lower right-hand corner. The pad detail that I just described to you as I walked you through the plan is also identified here in the lower left-hand corner. And then we finish out our set with some sectional details and the electrical details here. So I'm going to go ahead and pull back up the proposed plan and see if there are any questions, comments, or concerns.
Okay, thank you. I think the one thing here is that the planning department put together a pretty good agenda statement, I assume Clark put together the table of the zoning relief that's required. I think that's kind of key, just to kind of go through that and discuss those points. It appears that the setbacks have been reviewed and from a setback standpoint, the placement of the ATM is satisfactory, but it does impact, obviously, the parking spaces. And it'd be another reduction of parking spaces in the area of eight. I just took a ride over there, probably a bad time, but there was three or four cars in those parking spots, just, I just came through a little while ago. But the bigger concern is that the whole Phase 2 parking is deficient by the standard, by our code. I asked the planning office to take a look at the history on that, I think they've still got to do a little bit more work to pull the old, old resolution for approval for the, for that complex over there, and just to see if we granted a waiver for parking, you know, because it was insufficient at the time, or whether there was any banked parking identified with the original approval. Banked parking is something that, you know, if it's insufficient, but there's the possibility of adding some in the future, sometimes we have banked parking, and then if there's a need, you know, we, you know, pull that out, kind of thing, you know, it might have been green space that you convert back to pavement because there's a parking issue or whatever. And I'm not saying that's the case, but that's, you know, something that we need to look at. So let's see, we're, yeah, so I think, Clark, I believe it was your evaluation here, that with the total, it's like 27 parking spots deficient after this, I believe it's after this, right, Clark?
Yeah, it's after.
Yes, for the entire, for the entire lot.
And that's after the construction, right? Assuming this goes forward, it would be 27. So that's what we're looking at, not just, you know, the loss of the spots that this would take, it just adds to the deficit that's already there. So, you know, I'm not sure if anybody had an opportunity or goes over there frequently, whether or not there's been any issues with parking. I usually go over during the day and it's usually not too bad, you know? But that's just something that we got to consider. The other relief would be for the light pole, it's a 23-foot-high one that's proposed, our requirement's 22 feet high, so that would be a one-foot waiver for that. The lighting requirement is metal highlighted, and that could be because that's an old requirement, I imagine, right?
Yeah, I feel like we need to update our code on that because LED is preferred.
LED is preferred. The only thing we've got to watch is, you know, any light spillage, if some of these LEDs are pretty, you know, the color, you know, is a little bit different, and sometimes it seems to be more intrusive, so we just have to watch for that. So I don't think there should be an issue with that, and I personally don't think there should be an issue unless you have a 22-foot pole that you can come in compliance on the 23-foot, you know? But either one, I don't think's a problem. The logo of 30% is required on the signage, so, you know, so we need to approve the logo. And then the Chase sign, I guess that's part of the logo. So those are the things. So for me personally, taking a look at this, I think the one that we just need to talk about would be the parking and whether there's going to be a future problem over there. Do you know, this is a question for the applicant, any of the businesses that are currently there, were they notified by, I guess, the owner, whoever is sponsoring this project, to see if they had any concern, any of the current businesses over there?
So generally speaking, the landlord usually checks with the anchor tenant in order to make sure that the development's not going to be a concern, but in that process lets his other tenants know, and then according to their lease requirements, if there's any notification requirements as well.
So do you know if that occurred? And whether there's any-
No, I do not, I would have to verify that.
Yeah, that'd be good, you know, good question to ask, just whether he informed them and whether there's any concerns that came out of it, you know, that there's some parking issues that we're not aware of, you know? It'd be good information to have, and if there's no issues, of course, that's information too, right? So.
So a couple of things, so the landlord's been very involved in the, this development and the final configuration of CDs that you see in front of you here today, so they've been approved by the landlord. So again, I believe that they've done some work within the tenant base there in order to make them aware of this and make sure that there's not any concerns, but I'll verify that for you as well.
Yeah, it's just been, good information.
Sure.
So what does the board think? Any questions or comments from the board?
The question of availability of parking, you know, it's a great question we need to be asking, my personal observation is that there is an abundance of parking, and there's never really been a time I've experienced a lack of options.
Yeah.
And this is further down, further away from the walkability to the stores, so it's a good location, I think.
Yeah, just, just for those, like the dance studio and investment, you know, it's kind of like-
In there.
In that area, that's, you know, where they, I would assume they all park there and walk, you know, to their, to their business from that location. And Laura, you mentioned, I think, or Clark, in the statement, the quality of the parking lot, I just took a ride through there and I, yeah, it's understatement to say that there's potholes, I mean, there's the size of a swimming pool, a couple of them over there, it's pretty nasty over there, which might, you know, deter people from parking over there, because you got to get over there if you, you know, depending which way you go to get to that location, you know? But that's pretty bad over there right now. So you might want to mention that if it hasn't already been mentioned to the landlord, that they need to at least get some, some patch in those holes, because they're pretty deep over there.
Understood, and we'll make, we'll be making sure that the asphalt condition within our entire lease base is going to be at least good, if not excellent.
Yeah, and this might be outside of your space, potentially, some of them, but you know, but it does lead-
Understood.
-to get to where your space is, right, in order to get there, so.
I tend to agree with parking spaces being, it seems to be that there's plenty of parking spaces, but my concern over there ends up being the volume of traffic and traffic flow that doesn't always seem to flow, I guess, as seamless as it maybe should be. So I guess I'll ask Mr. Riley, do you have any sort of indication with your preliminary studies of how much extra traffic this is going to create even on a daily basis?
Yes, so we do have formal information in the form of studies based on the anticipated transaction volumes at these ATMs. It would be a fair statement to say that these ATMs are not in support of necessarily an installed base, but more of an expansion profile that Chase is taking in the area. So these are, you know, sort of early opportunity sites that would be relatively low volume when you compare it to a standard ATM machine that might be on a bank site, you know, a branch site. So we've got information that pretty clearly substantiates that the queuing that may occur at the machine would be about one car in addition to the car that would be using the ATM. Now, those are, you know, sort of random events, right? So, you know, there could be, you know, occasions when that's a bit different, but by purely the analytics of the numbers behind those queuing studies, you know, the probability of there being more than one car behind the ATM machine, statistically speaking, is very close to zero.
Do you have a daily quantifiable number that you're able to share with us?
Yeah, Tom, let's talk about the numbers of transactions per hour.
So, so a typical machine in this category are looking at about 1,800 transactions per
Are there peak hour transaction times?
They do have some variation to peak hours, so those are, you know, sort of commute time, so early in the, in the business day, and then later in the afternoon would be peak
Are they 24/7?
They are 24/7.
I do like the way that it's laid out as far as, you know, headlights facing the businesses when they're making their transaction versus the neighbors- when they're making their transaction versus the neighbors across the street, the apartments across the street, so that's positive.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a comment, it would be super helpful because I'm a layperson. If the applicant had brought like a rendition so we could actually see what it's going to... I mean, obviously, the specs are great to look at, to see the sizes of things, but in reality, to see just what it's going to look like in that corner, it would be helpful just to kind of see in relation to where everything is. I'm a visual person, so.
Yeah, what we've done in the past is, is there another one in the area that's similar construction that you're aware of?
Tom, do you have any pictures at hand of a completed project? I think the closest one is probably Troy North Green Bush.
Give me a second here.
And if you don't know tonight, if you want to look into it and contact the planning office, now let us know the locations. There's one saying Saratoga, you know, and then we could take...
Actually, Tom, if you want to go to the next page on the drawings while you're looking. The elevations really do depict relatively precisely what you're going to see. Everything is color-coordinated, color-matched, you know, from the millbank meter pedestal to the canopy legs, the VHD bar, you know, what you see, that's the gray color, is all color-matched. And what you see is blue colors, all relatively color-matched. You know, the bollard covers, there's plastic decorative covers that go over there, the VHD bar, the gate. Those will all be blue elements. And then the other items will be metallic silver, not necessarily metallic, but a kind of a dull gray-silver color, and again, all color-matched.
Is there any flexibility with the bollards being a decorative precast concrete? Maybe to match some of the other buildings that are there? There's a lot of brick and precast and some split-face block as opposed to having seven blue bollards there?
I don't know. I've ever seen... Do you have an example of a decorative precast bollard?
Yeah, I can send one to the planning office, too.
Yeah, we've got some... We've got some control and color variation, but I haven't seen anything other than that.
And the good thing about the plot that covers is that they're replaceable easily. So if they ever start to show anywhere, they're a very rigid plastic with a very nice finish, you know, color-coordinated. And generally, they just, they replace them on about the same timeline as the ATM itself. Like typically, the ATMs have maybe a three- to five-year shelf life. And whenever those are changed, the bollard covers are changed as well.
So aren't there a special set of rules for this location, being part of the Town Center overlay in terms of color and materials?
So it's not the same as the Mohawk Commons. The Town Center overlay district does have some, but it's not like you're used to seeing in Mohawk Commons where they have to be like earth tones and stuff like that. That isn't in the Town Center.
So I recall for the ShopRite Square...
It's under a planned development district, though, so it does have some of its own rules on that. But I was checking, it doesn't, aside from the parking and, you know, maybe the logo and stuff like that, it doesn't appear to violate anything within a PDD.
Okay, so the blue color is fine?
Yeah.
Remember, we were used to giving St. James Square a hard time for green or whatever was the other color?
St. James Square used to have a rule that it couldn't have like glowing signs, but that was removed in like 2007 or 2008. So you may, maybe it was even later than that. You may remember those conversations because we definitely had them, but the code was changed. And then we got things like Tai Tai and Dollar Tree that had those glowing backlit signs.
Yeah. But even if there wasn't a precast available or something that the applicant didn't want to use, would it look better if it was white versus the blue? You know, just for the bollards?
Or something more decorative, that, you know, they have metal bollards that are black. You know, they have a finial on them, something a little bit more detailed than a Schedule 40 pipe with concrete, you know, slipcover.
So are you able to see my screen now here, where we've got a visual representation of a sample site here?
Yep, we can see it.
So the bollards themselves, you know, we could make them a bit more muted and make them a gray, sort of that light nickel color. If you're looking for a little bit more texture to the design, the actual canopy legs can also be cladded in materials other than, you know, this dark nickel cladding that we're showing today. So we've seen, you know, a number of different installations where we've done stacked stone in those cases. So it's a bit more visually attractive and very similar to, you know, sort of the design of what a number of these developments are going to.
Yeah, it seems like, what I'm hearing is that the blue, it's pretty, I don't know, bright, I guess would be the word, maybe.
Yeah.
You know, if you take a look at the mall there, the center right behind this location, you know, it's brick. I think it's got green trim, concrete, you know, it was meant to be, you know, you know, I don't know what word to use, but it was meant to be, I don't want to say upscale, but attractive at least, you know. So I don't know how the blue would fare against that. And I understand there's some corporate logo requirements here. But if we could work with the bollards at a minimum and, you know, any of the other structurals to kind of tone it down or to blend it in with the background, that would be nice, you know. And I can understand the signage, you know, if that's the corporate colors, I can understand that. But anywhere that we have an opportunity to tone it down a little bit, that would be great.
I mean, there's high pedestrian traffic, so I agree. Any way that we can make it more aesthetic, aesthetically pleasing.
We can certainly make it more muted grays instead of the Chase blue. And again, if we need to look at, you know, some other potential cladding surfaces for those canopy legs to make them a bit more contemporary, we can certainly do that as well. And the same goes for the VHD there. That's in blue. That could also be in the nickel gray.
Hey, Tom, I'm calling from my home right now. I'm a member of the board. How is a customer supposed to know of its existence on the lot? Is this supposed to be an internet awareness or is there signage that's going to be contemplated on the main entry of the plaza?
So if available, Chase always takes over a tenant panel. If there's a, you know, monument sign that's for shopping center tenants to advertise on. But generally speaking, they don't put any more directional signage in other than just a tenant panel on the main signage for the shopping center.
Yeah, and they probably update their webpage with, you know, the ATM location, so in case somebody's trying to find one too, right? So that's...
Oh, absolutely. It's going to be not only available on Chase's own applications from their webpage, but, you know, Google and all the other services available to folks to find this ATM. It will definitely be a part of that.
What's your guys' schedule? What was your thoughts on, you know, timetable?
So I think in this case, the lease has been exercised. So, you know, we're sort of permits away from starting to spin up construction schedules. By and large, these are pretty quick builds. So power is usually our long lead item. We can put this site, from a construction perspective, you know, very close to substantial completion within a couple of weeks. Generally speaking, it takes five to six weeks after we get our final inspections in order to deliver power. Sometimes a little bit sooner, but that's usually our experience.
But it appears to me, and the planning office can straighten me out if I'm wrong, but the long poll here is understanding what waivers, if any, have been granted on parking and if whether or not we need to go to ZBA, right? By pulling the original file from the approvals of this complex. Because if it's going to have to go to the ZBA, we're going to need to make a recommendation. And that would be, the earliest for the ZBA would be, let's see?
May.
Would be May. Would be May in order to get the approvals for the reduction of parking spaces. And then if the ZBA approves it, you know, then come back to this board for the final resolution, which would include any updates, you know, colors that we see fit and any waivers that we can provide for the LED lighting and the height of the poles on and so forth. So that would mean if this has to go to ZBA, the earliest you could probably get your approval would be the end of May would be the earliest.
Well, I think we could accommodate the light pole height issue, you know, right from the start. And then, yeah, obviously, you know, we're hoping that the parking situation here accommodates us. We've got civil support lined up if we need to go that route. But, you know, we're hoping that that's not necessary.
Yeah, but I don't think that the, that's again for the planning office. If we don't have the authority to allow you to have an additional reduction in the parking spaces, it has to go to ZPA. So we'll need that call from either the planning office from legal to know if we have that authority. If we have that authority, well, then it's, you know, it's a matter that we're happy with the color scheme and that parking's sufficient. And then we would, you know, have a resolution, taking care of things, so that would make it go sooner.
I recall there are parking reductions on this land.
Well, so I was restructuring it a little bit, but I wanted to circle back to your comment, Mr. Khan. Although they removed the backlit signs, there is still color standards for the Town Center overlay. And incompatible colors include metallics, neons, and/or primary colors. So working to mute those colors, I think, is important for the Town Center overlay. But what I had found in the limited research that I did this morning was that PDD allows for some kind of a planning board waiver for shared parking up to 25%. But what was unclear is the numbers that were used back then versus what's there now. So we still have to do a lot of research, but I would, the planning board always has very limited ability in parking. And there's definitely no place for banking on this site. So I think that if we can't show that it fits within the old approvals, because they're removing eight spaces, it likely would have to go to the zoning board.
Did you catch that, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Riley?
I did.
And we did, yeah. And just to circle back on the lighting, it was a fixture that is specified. It is an LED fixture. And as Tom mentioned, bringing that height down by a foot is not a problem. So we could probably take the lighting off the table of various requirements.
And if there is an approved color palette for this particular district that we could, you know, get a copy of, I'm very confident that we could get the color palette here, even if it's much more muted than what's presented to comply with local regulation. And now just leave us with that parking reduction issue to hopefully get beyond.
Yep, that seems reasonable. Go ahead, please pull the microphone forward.
I'm wondering if we've had any other, any problems with, I know we've got at least one standalone ATM. I'm just wondering if we've had any problems or if the police department has had any problems with that. I'm thinking of the one by the Benjamin Moore store. Yeah, Ben Moore and Flanagan, that one.
I haven't received any complaints since I've been in my office through building. I wouldn't know if the police have received, believe it or we check, calls on that. We can check. I haven't received any complaints on it.
You kind of think it would have made the paper, but that's not always true.
No, it's not always true. But I haven't had them come complain to me about it either, so it doesn't seem like it's been an issue, but I can double-check with them.
And I mean, this kind of usage is allowed here.
Mm-hmm.
Truly the parking issue, that's the...
Yeah, it's just the parking, just need to come through.
Yeah, so we can check on this safety of a similar installation and then have a good answer on the parking by the end of the month to whether or not you guys need to do a recommendation to the zoning board or you guys have the authority to do a waiver.
Yeah, you know, complete the research, which I know is, it's been a while, so pull the old paperwork, see where we stand against a 25% waiver and whether there's still room in that, so we have the authority to be able to allow this to go forward ourselves without going to the ZBA. So that's an open item that will, you know, the planning office will work between now and the next time we get together, which is two weeks from now. And then the planning office will also send you the color requirements for the Town Center overlay district or for this PDD, whichever it is, and make sure that you have that. So you can make some suggestions on minimizing, I guess, the blue, to make it fit better with the, what's approved over in that area, okay?
Excellent. Yes, thank you.
Yep, and then also the planning office, as they always do, will send this out to the police and fire departments so they're aware of the configuration changes. Just see if there's any comments. You come back, that's routine that we send it to those guys to take a look at. We'll do that. You'll validate, just ask the landlord whether he notified the tenants, whether he had any negative feedback or any feedback at all, would just be of interest to us regarding parking, especially, of course, right? And if we can work on those things between now and the next meeting, hopefully, the next meeting, you know, either we have to make a recommendation to the ZBA and you're going to have to wait until the ZBA meeting in mid-May. I think it's the second Wednesday of the month or third somewhere.
Yeah, it's usually the third Wednesday of the month.
Third Wednesday of the month. Hopefully, that's not the case. If that's not the case, we have the authority, we'll have this discussion at the next meeting and then we can call for a resolution granting any waivers or anything we need to grant and take action, which would be the first meeting in May, which probably be the second week of May for this board. And then that would be your potential approval date. That sound reasonable?
That sounds reasonable. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll get some information off to you and you provide us some feedback on colors once you get that information, and we'll work on it and see if we can help it along, okay?
Yep, my only other recommendation to the board is that, I mean, this is a benefit to the tenant, obviously, because they're probably leasing the space and making money for it. And right now, the tenant is not complying with the pavement. I mean, there's giant holes, but they're also not complying with their pre-existing landscaping plan. They lost a lot of trees to the Emerald Ash Bore. So I think that, you know, to keep the aesthetics of the site up, if they were going to get the benefit of an ATM, the landlord needs to go in there and replant all those trees and bring the landscaping plan back to what it's supposed to be.
So Laura, can you give us some detail on what's, you know...
Yeah, the landscaping plan is actually in the packet.
Okay.
The main area that I see a lot of trees having been removed is like this east entrance into Phase Two, but there's a number of them that were taken down recently and need to be replanted.
And that's really a maintenance, you know, independent of this, but this is an opportunity to make sure that the maintenance gets taken care of, okay?
Yep. And just one last question for completeness. I know you had said it earlier, Mr. Riley. Is there another location on this parking spot, on this lot, that will not have a reduction in parking that could be suitable? Did you look at it completely?
We did. We did not find any place that would be suitable, that did not involve a reduction in parking spaces, unfortunately.
Yeah, I think we, some time ago, right, Laura, we had some discussions. I don't know if it was with you, Mr. Riley, or Mr. Quinn, or maybe with somebody else. But, you know, there was at least some discussions in the planning office about this coming, you know, in the future sometime, and here we are, so.
Yeah, you know, we, you know, obviously, the best way to do this is to offset parking somewhere else in the lot. And, you know, with that Starbucks development that happened, you know, sometime in the somewhat recent past, they sort of, you know, did the best that was available at that time. So, you know, just not an obvious solution for us that doesn't involve a reduction, unfortunately.
Well, Starbucks added parking like significantly, so the Starbucks only requires nine...
And they drive through all the time.
They only required nine...
Yeah, yeah, they did, yeah. I mean, they did a great job adding parking, but, you know, just didn't necessarily bring it, you know, back into compliance. And then, you know, with this development, we are definitely adding to that. But, you know, that's yet to be determined, right?
Yep. All right, so is that it for tonight? The only thing I'd like to add is we'd like the project lead also for this one, you know, take care of these details. So if somebody would like to pick...
I'll volunteer, Mr. Chairman.
All right, subscribe your tenants. Mr. Henry, we could make note of that, please. And, all right. All right, anything else from the board for tonight on this subject or from the applicant?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, hearing nobody, we'll close this portion of the meeting and we'll be in touch, okay? Then thank you.
Thanks folks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Clark, I actually talked about this, but I forgot to put it in the agenda statement. I think that the parking lines, like especially in the rear of the building, the stripes aren't really there anymore. So if we're counting parking spaces and we're making sure that the parking is as adequate as it can be, we also probably want to make sure that they re-stripe those areas in the rear that it seems to be like not very well striped, so cars are kind of parking all over the place.
Thanks Laura. Okay.
Duly noted, thank you.
All right, well said, we'll move on. All right, and that's it for discussion items tonight, so we'll go right to the planning department for reports. Clark or Laura, anything tonight?
We're trying to organize the, the walkthrough with the Trinity Baptist Church. It looks like the timing right now is probably April 21st. So I'll send an email to you guys, I think I had it around 5:30 or 6:00 PM. He's a funeral director, so he can't quite lock that in, but, but I think that's what we'll target. And then hopefully that'll work out for people to do that site walkthrough. And then obviously, no GE tonight, they're still working on their engineered drawings, but we expect them back at the next meeting. And the tree council scheduled a walkthrough with them to figure out where to put some tree screening on Wednesday.
Great. You have anything, Clark?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, any questions on any projects for the, for the planning department from the board? All right, all right, so commission business then. Mr. Diopino, you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing tonight.
All right, and Mr. Khan?
Nothing.
And Mr. Laflamme?
No, sir.
And Ms. Shenfield?
No, nothing for me.
Miss checked it, a different order, I wrote it down. How about Mr. McPartland?
Nothing for me, thank you.
And Mr. Scrubby Tennis?
Nothing for me.
All right, Ms. Gold?
Um, yeah, it's actually more a question for Laura, but I, I've been by Knott Street a lot. Not normally in Morning Rush, but I'm not seeing all the traffic disruption I feared. But I am seeing far more parking spaces available than normal. Are the county letting you know when the major disruptions will be? Because I think people are just staying away from the area because they don't know when it's going to happen.
I mean, we haven't received like a full schedule. I think usually they start out with utilities and the... I, I agree with you, I really haven't seen too much disruption in the traffic yet, but I think it's coming shortly.
But they're not going to tell us when?
No, I don't have a date for you.
It would be very beneficial if they would.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the town did try to put out notification to everybody that all those businesses are staying open during that time. They're trying to limit closure when they do that project, they're supposed to keep one lane open in both directions for almost the entirety of the project so that those businesses can remain open. And, you know, it's important for people to know that those businesses are open and to try and make the effort to visit them so that we can keep that little core that is very instrumental to our Town Center overlay district, but we don't have a specific schedule.
Be so nice if they would just shoot out a weekly update and expect disruptions at this day, you know, at this time.
I can ask them, not likely, but I can ask them.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of variables. There's a lot of variables. I mean, I can just say from my observation, they have a lot of equipment and materials on site. They've got drainage structures there, they've got piping. So it's, it's likely that they've got a lot of this stuff ahead of time before they start a construction, which is good, which will minimize the downtime for certain locations. But you're right, there will be a point where they have to get transverse across, you know, to the business side on the north end and it will be, there will be some disruptions. But it's, that's a pretty clean site. I've seen, I've been by it a number of times.
Yeah, but State DOT does put updates on for their projects. So it'd be nice if the county would do the same.
Okay, Ms. Gold, anything else?
No, that does it, thank you.
No, thank you, Ms. Drang, anything?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have nothing for tonight except for thank you to the planning office and thank you, everybody. We have a great team here tonight, thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Move for adjournment by Mr. Diopino and seconded by Mr. Khan. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.